... at this point, so go ahead, Cece.
Okay, well, thank you so much. I'm, once again, so grateful that our select board has been supportive of looking into technology safety over the years. And many of you know that we became sort of a pilot program here in the United States, where we became the first public library to put a radio frequency radiation detection meter on loan. And I just got word today that Suntorlin Public Library in Suntorlin, Mass. has just done the same thing. Wellesley and Bedford have done the same, so thank you guys for listening. I'd like to introduce Dr. Rob Brown, who is a radiologist, and he has additional information about his credentials. Susan, are we able to give him screen sharing privileges?
I did get one. He should be outside.
Okay. Rob, if you are able to do screen sharing, then we'll listen to your presentation for the next 10 minutes, and then I'll come back.
Great, okay. Thank you.
Hold on one second, please. Let me just, uh... Okay, can you see that?
Yes.
Great. Cece, thank you for inviting me to speak with you today. Uh, yes, I am a diagnostic radiologist. I work for a group called Radiology Partners in Phoenix, Arizona, and I'm also the Vice President for the Environmental Health Trust for Scientific Research and Clinical Affairs. So this is a passion of mine. Uh, I deal with ionizing radiation, not my day job, and in my spare time, I'm concerned about the wireless, the effects of wireless communication radiation, which is becoming all too prevalent. Now, this is considered a fringe science to some, and I think the reason for that is because it does border on the intersection of four different scientific disciplines. They include medicine, biology, physics, and engineering. With my education and career, I have some background in three of the four. My experience with engineering is not great, but I do have the good fortune of working with some excellent engineers at the Environmental Health Trust. Now, first, for you to understand what radiation is. Radiation is actually a word that means irradiating from a central point, and radiation travels in waves, and those waves have a frequency. The frequency of X-rays is so powerful that it can cause ionization, and we know that that's dangerous. But the one thing that I want you to understand is that the radiation actually travels through the body. We think that we're solid. We look at our bodies, and we think that we're solid because we only see the surface, but when we're exposed to radiation, that radiation does not respect our skin's surface, except there is some reflection off the skin, but the radiation penetrates into the body. So what we're looking at here in an X-ray, the darker areas are those areas where the X-rays have an easier time penetrating through the body, and the lighter areas are those where some of the X-rays are being absorbed. Now, light is also a form of electromagnetic radiation, and again, we're used to seeing light reflect off of the surfaces of, of things, such as this finger on the left, but if you shine a bright light on the fingertip, as the image on the right shows, you can actually see that the light is transmitting through the skin. And you can do a simple test at home. Go into a dark room, close your eyelids, turn on the light, and you will see light come through your eyelids even though you're, uh, even though they're closed. MRI is a technology that uses radio frequency radiation and magnetic fields. If radio frequency radiation didn't penetrate into the body, and magnetic fields didn't penetrate into the body, we would not be able to get images like this MRI of a shoulder. Now, radio frequency radiation is also being emitted by our devices, and here's a short list. Uh, at this point, there's probably many, many more, but each one of these devices is a source of radio frequency radiation, and many of these are found in our homes. And what happens is, you have this source of radiation, which is demarcated by this rounded figure with the spikes on the left of this room. The radiation projects waves of energy that reflect off the surfaces, penetrates, and becomes absorbed. And you can see that the figure in the middle is being bombarded with radiation from all sides, but this isn't really accurate. What actually happens is that radiation travels in waves that scatter, and so we end up with really more of a cloud effect, and the cloud effect reflects and refracts and does all the other things that waves do, and we can consider this a form of electric pollution. I mentioned that radiation travels in frequencies. The, the range of frequencies can, is represented on this electromagnetic spectrum, and I put the three images that I showed you previously where they are, where they belong respectively on this spectrum. 5G is in this area right here. Now, if you will remember, old-style radios, the AM radio had a dial on it, and you can see up here with this arrow, the AM radio is around 600 kilohertz to about 1.6 megahertz on the dial, and you could turn that dial about five or six times to go through all of the stations on the AM radio, from one end of the bandwidth to the other, and each time you would hit a station, it would go from a static to, you'd hear the sound clearly. 5G is encompassed by this oval here. You would have to turn a dial about 275,000 times to go from one end of the 5G spectrum to the other. That's how many frequencies are in 5G. Now, we, I'm sure you've seen these antennas in your, in your town, or if not in your town, then in nearby towns. These are 5G antennas. The longer antennas are transmitting the lower and midbands of the, of the network, and these square antennas, which are really comprised of a net, of a grid of small, very small antennas, are the high-band frequencies. These, uh, high-band frequency antennas are also being installed on poles, and here's one in front of this house. Now, you may walk by this pole, and you don't hear anything, you don't feel anything, and you don't see anything, but if you have the right kind of detector, you can actually measure the radiation coming from it, and I'm going to show you a simulation. So this is a detector that I have, and you can see that it measures from 20 to 40 gigahertz, which is in the range of the high bands. If I aim it towards this antenna, I'm getting values up to 10,000 microwatts per meter squared, which is very high, and background should be zero. This is not a natural form of radiation. So the second thing I want you to understand from tonight's talk is that non-ionizing radiation can cause damage to your cells. It does so in the form of cellular oxidative stress. What does that mean? Stress is like any kind of stress. If you stress a bone, you can end up with a stress fracture. If you don't take care to men, to rest the stress fracture, you can end up with a complete fracture. When cells undergo oxidative stress, they are not functioning normally, and what happens is, you end up with too many ions, and those ions can then look to steal electrons from other atoms, and you can end up with damage to cell membranes, to proteins and enzymes, to the DNA itself, and to mitochondria, which are the powerhouses of the cell. Now, the, the parts of the body that are at risk is up for debate, and it really depends on the frequency that you're being exposed to. The lower-frequency bands penetrate deeper into the body, and the higher bands penetrate less so, but all the superficial structures, including the thyroid gland, the testes, the elements of the skin, including blood, the immune system, neurons, your eyes, and even the brain and heart can be affected by these bands of radiation. The thyroid gland is particularly radio-sensitive. There was a study done at the bottom of this, this description here, in which medical students were studied. They used cell phones for one hour a day, and after two months, they had hyperstimulation of their thyroid glands. Now, that might not sound like such a big deal, except that the thyroid emits thyroid hormone, and thyroid hormone has remote actions on different parts of the body, including the immune system. So if you're hyperthyroid or you're hypothyroid, it can cause a depletion of your immunity. It can also affect your heart, and people with thyroid abnormalities can end up with This type of radiation can also affect sperm. Studies have been done on animal models, including rats and mice, as well as on humans, and the sperm can lose their motility, they can have abnormal morphology, and they can actually lose their survival, their survivability. And this may be one of the reasons why we're having a, a problem with male fertility in this country, particularly for men who place a cellphone in their pocket. The radiation is traveling very close from that pocket through just a very thin barrier of skin to affect the testis itself. I mentioned that if the thyroid is abnormal, you can have immune effects. With a thyroid, uh, the, uh, radio frequency radiation can actually affect the behavior of the immune cells themselves. It can affect natural killer cells, macrophages, all different types of cells in the immune system, and this can predispose you to develop viral infections. This is a particularly concerning effect that has been shown on the blood. This is done by a technique called live blood cell analysis. On the left is a smear of blood that is considered normal. The same patient was exposed to 10 minutes from a Wi-Fi router, and her blood was re-sampled, and you can see that the blood cells are all clumped together. This is called rouleau formation. It's a reversible phenomenon, but the problem is, when you're in this state of aggregation, you're predisposed to develop blood clots. It also hampers the ability of the blood cells to deliver oxygen and for them to remove carbon dioxide from your tissues. Now, all the things that I mentioned don't cause symptoms, so you wouldn't have any clue that they were happening to your body until it was perhaps causing a disorder, but there are people who are having symptoms from these forms of radiation, and the, the ones that probably will ring, uh, familiar to many of you are insomnia, difficulty sleeping, tinnitus, ringing in the ears, and a short-term memory loss and anomy, or thought block, not remembering what you're going to say. Now, these are all nonspecific symptoms, except that they're increasing in frequency, and I do believe they're being caused by this wireless communication. So what can we do? Well, some people talk about, you know, jokingly or disparagingly, they talk about this, the tinfoil hat. Of course, now that you know that this can infect your entire body, that would certainly have no effect at all on protecting yourself, but what you can do is you can increase your distance from antennas. Radiation follows something called the inverse square law, so when you double your distance from the source of radiation, you're actually diminishing your exposure by three-quarters. You can also turn off devices when they're not in use. I don't even own a Wi-Fi router anymore, but when I did, I turned it off when I wasn't using it. You can also hardwire devices like your computer, your laptop, your TV, your peripherals, all things that are now available with wireless options, but you really don't, you know, what's the problem with having a wire from your mouse, for example, to your computer? You can spare yourself the radiation when possible. And finally, I recommend increasing your intake of antioxidants, because antioxidants help restore the balance that gets disturbed from the presence of radiation. So it's a very brief, uh, talk, but I hope that gives you some information. I want to thank you again for the opportunity to talk, and Cece, I'll hand it over to you.
All right. Thank you, Doctor. Now, just before Cece starts, is there any, uh, should we wait, hold our questions to the end of the presentation, or is that the, okay, go ahead, Cece, and doctors, please stay on, online.
Okay. Thank you, Susan. Do you want to help me pull this up?
Just as a note, I, I think, you know, we should have some time for discussion and question and answer, including, um, some folks from the audience are physically here, so, um...
Yes.
I will, um, I will ask for that when we get to that point. If you're, if you're on remotely and want to use the raise hand function, um, if you'd like to speak, okay. So are you all set, Cece?
I think I am. Let me go into presentation mode. So, um, when the video from this is available, I will go ahead and, um, put this on my YouTube channel and include our slides from both Dr. Brown and myself. So what we want to do, um, I won't go through how I got all involved in this, but I'll leave this for you. Anybody is welcome to look at the, uh, links that'll be included in my slides, and, um, what I want to talk about is the solutions. So as Dr. Brown alluded to, it's not rocket science to fix this. Simply run ethernet cables from the back of your router. You can get something called a switch that allows you to hook many different devices up at once, even in a classroom, you could hook up 20 or 30 devices at the same time, and then you just need to get separate ethernet cables for each of the devices, like your cellphone or your laptop, with a little adapter. And then, that's step one for hardwiring. The second step is to go into the settings of each one and turn off the wireless, the Bluetooth, the hotspot, the locator, and any 5G antennas that you might have in your devices today. And then the third is to measure, because the industry is forecasting that we will have 200 wireless devices in our homes in the coming years. That's 5G and the Internet of Things. So as Dr. Brown said, that is a whole lot of electric pollution that we're going to be immersed in, and we're already well on our way. So let's look to see what our exposures are here in Ashland that we don't have control over 24/7. With your personal devices, you get to choose how you want to use those, but these wireless utility smart meters for electric, gas, solar, water, propane, they're putting these radio frequency radiation transmitters as part of that. We always paid employees to walk the neighborhood and get our readings. Industry came in and said, "Hey, we can save you some money. Let's just hook it up electronically, and then you don't have to pay those guys." Well, when we did that, we started doing a big trade-off with our health, and then the other area is the cell towers and macro, the big antennas, and then the smaller antennas for 5G for those small cells, and then the wireless access points in our schools and our public buildings that transmit this radiation 24/7, and we know that children are especially vulnerable. Their DNA is still developing, their immune system is under construction, their central nervous system is under construction, their skulls have thinner bone, and their brains have a higher water content. So inch per inch, our children are absorbing more of this radiation than you and I, and it's not good for you and I. And then we have to acknowledge that risk is cumulative with dose, as with any toxins, so the longer we leave ourselves immersed in electro pollution, the more we anticipate that we're going to hit that tipping point, and if we're not already seeing it, that we will be seeing the fallout that Dr. Brown mentioned. The Centers for Disease Control has something called the Alara Principle, and the goal with radiation is to get to as low as reasonably achievable, and it's not rocket science to fix. We know how to do it. Okay. One of the missing pieces to my puzzle when I fell down the rabbit hole back in 2013 is as I'm reading all this science that Dr. Brown highlighted, I kept thinking, surely somebody's got to have our backs on this. And then in 2015, Harvard Law School Center for Ethics came out with this free 59-page report called Captured Agency: How the Federal Communications Commission Is Dominated By the Industries It Presumably Regulates. So we have captured agencies with the FCC, the FDA, the CDC, and more, and sadly, it goes all the way up to the World Health Organization. If you do a quick search on electromagnetic radiation, you'll see something that makes it look inconclusive. You'll be hard-pressed to find this link that shows you that when our government completed a $30 million study that showed clear evidence of cancer and DNA damage, and the Ramazini Institute in Italy concluded another one on cell towers, found the same thing. They have reopened their investigation at the WHO, but it's not easy to find. So Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. taught us that when we have important changes in our society, it comes through three channels. First, the public becomes informed, which is what we're hoping to inspire here, and then gets engaged, because there's no cavalry coming. We have to fix this at the local level. The courts do their rulings, and eventually, public policy gets enacted. So I'll spend just a moment going through some really amazing inroads that are happening in all three of these areas, but we won't hear about it in mainstream media because it's owned by the industries that promote these toxic products. So here in Massachusetts, in all of our towns everywhere, the industry rolls into town and says, "Here's our applications. We want to put cell towers. We want to give you, you know, better service." What they're really doing is building out capacity for their next revenue stream. By law, we only have to be sure you can make a phone call. We don't have to allow them to put close-range cell towers next to our homes for all these other services that they're spinning up with streaming and IOT and all of that. That's not what the law provides for. That's their revenue stream. So they come into town and say, "Oh, if anyone says anything about environmental health concerns," those are just the NIMBYs, "not my backyard, folks." Well, that's not true. There's more than 150 groups across the United States working on this, and here, we can see that with, um, just local towns, you can see that people are working on this throughout the Commonwealth. Okay. Hmm. So these are all cell tower actions, and then towns themselves are stepping up and protecting themselves. The city of Boston has filed with the FCC to say, "We know this is not safe." They sued the FCC, along with mayors from many other, um, towns across the country. They didn't win, but it's showing that people are paying attention to this. Burlington came up with a small cell policy that had the industry withdrawing their small cell applications, and I can teach you more about that later, but it became part of a national example with a group called Americans for Responsible Technology that has a whole toolkit to help our towns get to safe technology. We did a presentation out, um, at the Hanskameria Town Select Board with these towns, and others have started adopting these policy changes that I've been asking Ashland to take a look at for years. And then, look, others are doing this all throughout the Commonwealth. And, uh, Dr. Brown was actually part of a panel that I was invited to participate in in Stamford, Connecticut, but I was on vacation, but after presenting the facts, Stamford rejected the governor's plan, which had been cooked up with industry, to put 5G small cells right outside of people's homes in the public access way. So with education, there's a lot that we can do, and these kinds of actions are happening all over the world. Now, legal solutions. There was a docket open with the Federal Communications Commission. For six years, there were thousands of pages of scientific and medical evidence of harm, along with citizens who have been harmed. The FCC completely ignored it. The FCC got sued and lost. The courts found that the FCC was arbitrary and capricious, meaning they didn't do their homework. They just said, "We're going to stick with these 1996 radiation limits, which have nothing to do with the way radiation is exposing us today." The face school here, right in Southborough, there was a little 10-year-old boy who kept getting all these symptoms that Dr. Brown mentioned, or many of them, and it turned out it was the wireless radiation in the schools, and there was a federal lawsuit that, for the first time, US courts recognized, yes, there are biological effects, and it has nothing to do with heat. It's these low-level, non-ionizing, non-thermal radiation exposures that are causing great harm. And did you know that the Massachusetts Board of Health, at the state level, has legal guidelines that now has four pages in it about wireless radiation? And there's a big lawsuit happening out in Pittsfield right now, where Verizon put a cell tower right on top of a neighborhood where everybody got so sick they had to abandon their homes. So there's so much happening, but we won't know about it until somebody like me presents you with the facts, and then as a town, we can decide how to use technology, but without the harm. So the third area is public policy, and we have six bills right now. That first one, Senate Resolve 155, has been voted, uh, voted out favorably by the Consumer Protection Committee to do a commission like New Hampshire did, which is that report that I shared with all of you a few weeks ago. The smart meter bill is still out there, too, with an emergency preamble, because we should not allow these industries to roll in and tell our towns it's mandatory. It is not mandatory, and everybody should have the right to choose an analog meter that doesn't radiate into our homes. And there are bills all over the country as well, and you can look at other things there in my slides. So school actions. The New York Times did an expose on what Silicon Valley executives are doing. They're sending their children to schools with no technology, not hardwired, not wireless, and they're going so far as to have their nannies sign contracts that there will be no screens around their children.
Not because of radiation.
Yep, they know, Claudia. They know. The Netherlands and Fi, no, they won't report on the radiation in the article. They have too much conflict of interest with their advertising revenue.
Cece, are you wrapping up, because we did talk about 10 minutes, so...
Yeah. Okay, so there are so many tools and resources to help us. The Massachusetts Breast Cancer Coalition has already built kindergarten-through-grade-12 prevention curriculum, so we have everything we need to start protecting the children. And so, next steps, we need to have an opt-out here in Ashland on all of these utility meters. We should not voice these toxic exposures. We should continue to educate the public, and I would love to partner with you as our town leaders to conduct forums, and please invite the industry. They generally don't show up, but go ahead and invite them. Um, there's some examples of where we've done this in other towns, and let's see if we can protect our kids as soon as possible. When you flip those ruckus wireless access points over, you see that there are two ethernet ports. All you got to do is drop a cable down at desk level, use a switch, and plug all the devices in, and then just turn off the antennas, and you have not only safer technology, but your signal is far faster, more reliable, you're not buckshotting the children's data out into the air for privacy and data security issues. So aside from convenience, hardwired technology beats wireless hands-down every time. And then, um, when I was talking with our planning board, Lisa Mead, our town attorney, was there, and she, I asked her if she's a specialist in telecom law, and she is not. In Burlington, they hired Donna Brewer, who came in and helped them to write their policy on small cells. Andrew Campanelli has used all over the country. He used to work for industry, so he knows the playbook. When he figured out what they were doing, he switched teams. So it's not long money to get an expert in here and get our town as protected as we can be. So thank you, and we'd be honored to answer any questions. I'll go ahead and stop the screen share.
All right. Thank you, Cece. Um, so I, I believe the board does have some questions, both for you and, uh, Dr. Brown, but is there, um, did we have anyone who wants to question? I mean, I think one of the, the things that we're dealing with is the strength of these, uh, the research studies and the connection to, uh, he, health effects, which we have, at least I have not experienced it as a conclusive study. So I, I know you've made certain representations, and I think, is there anyone either, you know, online that could address some of these research studies or fill out some information on broad-based epidemiological studies that show these kind of connections? I see, um, that would, that could be...
Dr. Brown, do you want to point them toward the Environmental Health Trust, where you can actually sit and read the science? It's also on my website at Massachusetts for Safe Technology.
Sure. I'll, I'll tell you, yeah, there are tens of thousands of studies that have shown these effects, tens of thousands, and if you talk to anybody who is, is in this area, they recognize that the science is conclusive. There's no question about this. You don't know about it because you're not taught it, and it's certainly not being covered in the media, but the science is done. It's, it's full-baked. The problem is politics. So if you want to look, you, if you want to do some research and go to like one site where you're going to find, you know, 100 papers to look at and, and study, the, the group that I'm, uh, the VP of is called the Environmental Health Trust. Their website is ehtrust.org. They have a lot of science there, tons to look at, and of course, every study that you look at will have tons of references and citations, so it's a great place to start.
All right. Well, thank you. So I will, I believe, does the board members have questions that they want to, and then we'll see, is there...
I see my husband online, who's a member of the Board of Health.
All right. I see David up there, and I, it's hard for me to actually see him, but he can unmute himself, and, uh, David Kinsman is a member of the Ashland Board of Health, and I think he has something he wants to say, so go ahead, David, are you...
Yep, he unmuted.
There he is. Good. Go ahead.
Yeah, thanks, Rob. Uh, yeah, David Kinsman, six Lucy Frenchway, um, member of the Ashland Board of Health. I have a few questions for Dr. Brown. Um, I apologize, Doctor, I didn't get to see your entire presentation. I apologize, doctor, I didn't get to see your entire presentation from the beginning. But my first question is, so you're, you're a doctor of radiology, a radiologist, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, so, so what is, what are the effects of this radiation look like in the body? Like, what are the, if somebody comes in and they're complaining of headaches or so forth from the effects of this radiation, what does that look like in your radiological imaging?
But there is no, there is no specific finding, because you're not talking about an anatomical insult to the body. You're talking about something that is so, it's atomic. We're talking about the generation of, we're talking about, what happens actually to the cells is the cell membrane has ion channels in it. And the ion channels open, and the interior of the cell floods with calcium. And that causes oxidative stress. And then oxidative stress causes cellular damage. So that's the mechanism of injury. And so it's not, it's kind of like, well, you're, it's like if you're exposing somebody to radiation and you don't see any physical damage, how do you know that any damage has occurred? We wouldn't know that ionizing radiation caused damage either, except for what happened in the bomb with Hiroshima and Nagasaki, where we actually could figure out, well, people were so far away from the blast site that they had a certain risk for developing cancer. But if we didn't have that data, we probably still wouldn't have regulation for ionizing radiation either.
Right, but I guess, I'm confused then, because your specialty is in medical imaging, and you're saying that you can't see these effects with the medical imaging, so I'm not.
So you want to know how I got involved?
Not necessarily. So, the next question I had was in your presentation, which of course was kind of all over the place, in that it doesn't really seem to deal with science so much as it seems intended to scare, if you pardon my characterization. So, on your slide there, we have the radio frequency radiation emitting devices. I noticed that everything there is something that's come about in, say, the last 20 or so years, yet electromagnetic radiation has been around us for much longer than that. From any device that uses electricity, of course, generates electromagnetic radiation.
Right.
The range of devices that you, that you list here are all ones that deal with communication radiation. But of course, for some reason, television is excluded, and as well as shortwave and longwave radios. So I find it interesting that you've selectively identified things that are relatively new and somewhat less familiar than other parts of our modern-day existence. Would you care to comment on that?
Sure, well, you know, I had 10 minutes to talk, so I can't be too exhaustive. I've spoken six hours on this topic. And you're right, electricity emits electromagnetic fields at very low frequencies, extremely low frequencies. It's, you know, 50 or 60 hertz, and they have health effects, too. There have been tons of studies done on what's called ELF, EMF. And television stations and radio broadcasting stations, people that live near those have had health effects, too. And there have been effects on wildlife as well. So the reason why this is so important now is because these antennas aren't on hilltops miles away from our cities. They're on the street right across from your house, or perhaps right on the corner next to your house. So we've brought these emitters of radio frequency radiation right into our neighborhoods, and people are walking right next to them. People are trying to sleep in their room, which might be 10, 15 feet away from an antenna. The game's changed.
Yeah, no, I'm well aware of that, because I live less than a quarter of a mile from one of those towers. It's at the top of the hill, within sight of the front, my front window. And behind me, I have power lines. And my wife and I have lived in this house for getting close to 10 years now, and we have not noticed any, any effects such as the ones that you've described.
It's interesting, people, you know, people have a different tolerance for it. And it may be that, you know, people have a different setup with their immune system. Some people have more antioxidants onboard. Some people have other stressors that are reducing their levels of glutathione, which is a master antioxidant in the body. So, you know, everybody's kind of an individual, and they have individual responses to this radiation. It's like, some people go out in the sun, and they'll get a sunburn, somebody else won't. Some people get skin cancer, other people don't.
Right.
And they're both no forms of radiation.
So getting back to your presentation, there was, you had some interesting, you were, you were trying to draw connections that didn't really seem to exist, so in your, I don't, you don't have numbers on your slides, I apologize. So the one about the thyroid, you refer to a study that, that caused thyroid hyperstimulation in students. And then the very next slide, of course, is full of all kinds of scary things that have to do with hypothyroidism and hyperthyroidism, neither of which is thyroid stimulation. So would you care to comment on that?
Yeah, there were three studies that I mentioned on that thyroid. I didn't, I didn't go into each of them, you know, in detail again because of the limited amount of time. But there have been a lot of studies to show that the, that the radiation can cause hyperthyroidism, and it can cause hypothyroidism. And they don't, they're not quite sure what, you know, what the difference is, except it may be chronicity of exposure. So it could be kind of a learned helplessness response. When you, when you're first exposed to the radiation, your thyroid lets out too much hormone. And then, over time, it becomes depleted, and you end up with hypothyroidism. So it, more research needs to be done, but there have been, there are definitely many studies, many more studies than I've included on that, on that slide, that have documented thyroid activity or lack of activity from exposure.
David, could I just, Dave, could you hold on just a second, please? I just want to kind of poll the board. We've gone a bit over our time. We had put aside half an hour. I find this an interesting conversation, but I do want to get a sense from the board if you want to spend a bit more time with this. Are we ready to move on, or what are people thinking here?
Well, the thing of it is, I, you know, I, I would, so my husband is a chemist. He's a researcher. He's done a lot of digging into the articles and things that you have provided. So my personal perspective is if, you know, if, you know, hopefully, this conversation is sort of the, I don't want to say the last one for a while, but the last one for a while on this topic. If there's questions that people have, if Dave has questions, and, you know, I'm happy to do that, but I know we do have a full agenda tonight, so.
Claudia?
Yeah, I'd just, I'd like to just make a couple of brief comments. You know, Cece, I know that you had asked me a few weeks ago if I had read what the material you had supplied. No, but I've done extensive reading through the years, back from 2013, you know, in part because of my position in the schools. And there's never been any conclusive, and over and over again, you will read that. It isn't just the FCC that oversees and sets standards for the devices in our homes. It's the Food and Drug Administration, it's, there's all kinds of medical use companies that provide standards for medical use, nuclear power, FEMA. The US Customs and Border Patrol actually provides some, Health and Safety Authority, United States Health and Safety Authority. There's many, many, you know, organizations and agencies that provide standards in terms of what we put into our homes. A lot of the research that's been done is on animals, and if anybody delves into it, they'll see that. Sometimes it cannot be extrapolated to humans. Many of your links, Cece, in your presentation, actually take us to discussions about screen time and students using, and children using screen time and their time. And I think, you know, we could all have a conversation just about general, right? The use of, of screens and that with our kids, regardless of radiation aspect of it. And I, you know, worked hard to find articles that are, in particular, Healthline.com had several articles. One, you know, that I thought was both very open to all the ideas and all the different studies and provided some suggestions about. But the other thing is, like, cellphone radiation is often one of your articles, too. I think in reference to this, the Southborough family. The, that's really more about probably cellphone radiation than it is about Wi-Fi. Again, and I know Dr. Brown mentioned about, as soon as you move away from these devices, from the Wi-Fi access points, as soon as you move away, it's dramatically drop in the radiation. So all those things are true. And I, I think that one comparison I see is that, you know, when we came out with a COVID vaccine several years ago, there was a lot of misinformation that was used to frighten people. And I feel that there's a taste of that, a flavor to this. And so, you know, I just feel as though it's something we need to be, continue to observe and certainly study. But to date, there is nothing that survives really close scrutiny. And so I would just.
Rob, can I respond to some of that?
Yeah, I think, yeah, just a quick response to that.
So Claudia, thank you for doing your research when you were serving on school committee and when you were the principal at the, what is now our new beautiful David Mendez School Building. That was back in 2013. In 2018, the US National Toxicology Program, which is arguably the gold standard on research in the world, they concluded a $30 million study that found clear evidence of cancerous tumors and DNA damage from cell phones. Clear evidence is the highest of five categories they can assign. The FDA commissioned that study. The gentleman who is in charge of the FDA today isn't the one who started this 20 years ago. They're all long since passed away or retired. Dr. Jeffrey Schuren, even though three days unprecedented peer review at the National Institutes of Health concluded clear evidence of cancerous tumors and DNA damage, Dr. Jeffrey Schuren went over to the FCC and said, ah, we don't believe that. Let's just keep doing what we're doing. And you have to do the deep dive. When you looked into Jeffrey Schuren's background, you see that he's married to a partner in a law firm that represents the wireless industry. So we have these captured agencies up and down the chain, and we have a huge regulatory gap, because not one single agency has done the top-to-bottom research that New Hampshire did with their legislative report. And if you're just doing cursory searches, that's all mainstream messaging from industry. They intentionally impose doubt. You need to talk to the scientists whose life's work is microwave radiation, and we are fortunate to be able to put you in touch directly with them. So it sounds, Claudia, that you've been drinking the Kool-Aid a little bit.
Well, let me just, so.
But I want to comment on those wireless access points. If you look at the communique I sent out today, there's one in one of our classrooms at Mendez. There is no safe level of man-made radiation in the scientific literature. I was getting readings in the tens of thousands and hundreds of thousands at desk level in the Mendez School. In our sleeping areas, the science recommends we be at 10 microwatts per square meter or less. Literally, thousands and hundreds of thousands in those classrooms. And there weren't even any children in there during the open house. So it is a very, very toxic environment, and I hope that we will keep this conversation going. And as far as the articles that I did send on what Silicon Valley experts are doing with their children, when I was brought down to the National Institutes of Health to run the technology panel for the Health and Buildings Roundtable Conference, Ronnie Rabin is a New York Times reporter, and she was working on a story to talk about the wireless radiation effects, and it got killed. And this is what's happening in mainstream.
So I do want to, I think Dr. Brown did mention that ehtrust.org as a clearance. So I suggest that people look at that.
I do want to, I do want to make a comment, because you were talking about, like, research. And I also had done some research as well. I looked at the New Hampshire document that you had sent. I had done quite a bit of digging in some of the links, and I also.
Okay, so what else?
The only thing I wanted to just mention was that you were, you were saying that, you know, I was looking at, I was looking at some research, including a Journal of American Medical Association article on, that looked at radio frequency radiation and cancer. And the, and just, I just want to read the conclusion and relevance. It says, "The evidence from these combined strands strongly indicates that claims of an RFR cancer link are not supported by the current evidence base. Much of the research to date, however, has been undetermined by methodological shortcomings, and there's a need for higher-quality future research endeavors," which I think is needed. "Finally, the role of fringe science and unsubstantiated claims in patient and public perception on this topic is highly relevant and must be carefully considered." So I would suggest that, you know, I was looking, because I figured if there was all this data, which I actually didn't see, like, causational data in anything that I looked at, something that.
It would be grand, and I can hand you the studies. Can I ask what year that came out?
2022.
And who was the author on that?
I would have to.
Because there's a lot of industry plants, even with our most trusted areas that used to be very trusted sources. There's heavy industry influence.
So, and I, and I. I just, I just find it very troubling that if there is all this evidence, it has not risen to the point of publication in mainstream, well-known publications, like the Journal of American Medical Association, or the New England, or the New England Journal of Medicine. Like, there, like, where is the research being done? You know, we look at things like lead paint in the 80s and what had happened with that. And there were clear, there was clear studies, cause and effect of things. This is not a clear cause and effect. The symptoms that are described are literally every symptom known to man. And if you can, if there is evidence that is clear, that actually shows the causation.
The National Toxicology Program deemed it clear evidence of cancerous tumors and DNA damage. That's the highest of five categories.
So, so I hear you. I hear you. But I'm saying I cannot see any evidence that, that, that shows me that we should take action on something that, to me, is not clear science. So that, nope, nope, that, I'm just gonna, I'm just gonna say that, like, that, that's my, that's my personal standard, so.
We have one person with a hand up.
All right, but let's, Joe or?
I just want to let Cece know that I did read that, that report. Took me a while to get through it, because I don't have the, the knowledge that everybody else has when it comes to, you know, that scientific report, but I did read it. I have some sort of understanding to it, but again, I'm trying to.
To learn.
Yeah, basically.
And that's what we're asking for, is community.
All right, thank you, Joe. And I see there's one person with their hand up virtual. So if you can unmute yourself and maybe identify yourself and your relationship to this hearing.
Yes, thank you. My name is Janet Fitzgerald. I don't live in Ashland. However, I am one of many people who are part of Massachusetts for Safe Technology. And I would like to speak up on behalf of people, millions, really, of us who are sensitive to electoral pollution. And to let those who are doubting the science, which is the science, there's a lot of science. And there's tons and tons of science that the FDA refused to look at for 27 years. This is a follow-the-money story. Now I'm going to tell you a personal story. I happen to have come up close to a 5G antenna in January while on vacation, at Lake Placid. Anyway, within about 50 feet, I didn't even know it was there, but all of a sudden, I was in a stairwell on my way up, you know, touring, and I became very faint. And I had what now now is tachycardia. I also had a massive migraine. I went back home here to Massachusetts and saw a cardiologist explain what happened. I had to have testing. And he told me, yes, we are seeing a lot of this, okay? Yes, they're seeing it. This is for real. And I'm telling you, whoever wants to doubt this, why don't? And I'm telling you, whoever wants to doubt this, why don't you go up close to a 5G antenna and sit there for a while and see how you feel, because it is not fun. It is scary. And by the way, I'm a cancer survivor, and I don't want this anywhere near me. I'm hiding out in a smaller town in Massachusetts right now. My husband has a cellphone brain tumor right here where we hold our cellphone, okay? As did many, some celebrities that we know, John McCain, Ted Kennedy, Beau Biden. Can we swear they were by cellphone? We don't know, but pretty coincidental, that's right here. Anyone who wants to say there's doubt or that someone's trying to scare them, that's a judgment call, not based on science. And by the way, speaking of science, Mr. Kinsman, you said you missed some of, of Dr. Brown's presentation. It might have included the part about the Rollo effect. You were saying, well, what, what can we see that shows that something happened to someone's body? Go inside the body, and that's what Dr. Brown is trying to tell you. And on the slide about the Rollo effect, matter of fact, on this call right now, there's a very famous scientist named Dr. Magda Havas, and she's in this audience, I saw her. And I happen to have witnessed a live demonstration that she did of this Rollo effect before and after the exposure to RF radiation.
Well, thank you.
It's blood clumping. Blood clumping's serious, and Dr. Brown can tell you.
Thank you. You know, our time is, I appreciate your, your testimony.
This is life and depth stuff, I'm telling. Please do not cut this whole topic short, and cut me short, but please listen to Cece Doucette. She's a nationally recognized expert. She can lead you to all the experts in the world. And Dr. Brown also, and Dr. Magda Havas also.
I certainly appreciate, I think we appreciate your passion in that.
No, it's not passion, it's, it's, I've been affected. But telecom has, is the largest and most powerful and most evil.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate that. We just, we are a small-town select board. We appreciate people taking the time and effort to educate us and bring these efforts to us. I don't think we have the resources and the capability to spend a lot of time on this. I, for one, felt it was important enough to have this hearing in that you've given us some good information. I appreciate Dr. Brown and the others testifying, and Cece, I think we all acknowledge your passion and concern on this. We've dealt with you for many years on this. I think you've given us some information that perhaps the board members will feel that they will continue to consider as we go through this. I think our, you know, ability to act individually is somewhat limited, but I think, you know, we've been given some tools and some awareness, and, you know, if that's how the science keeps moving in that direction, perhaps that's something that could be, that could, you know, affect how we make decisions. I would, you know, I appreciate Dr. Brown's, you know, website with the, with the information, and that's something I'm gonna try to take a look at. And were there any other, other concerns or thoughts from the board? I think, so with that, I think I will conclude this portion of the meeting. But, you know, Cece, thank you again for coming, and perhaps we've started, you know, a longer dialogue, but we can continue on this. And I do wanna thank you for the concrete, you know, things we're talking about that things affect us, such as being able to use wired devices versus wireless, and, you know, how we handle our cellphones and things like that. So hopefully there's kind of more certainty to come on this that will help us make decisions in this, but, so thank you.
Yeah, and I appreciate you continuing to do your research, because I think once you get away from mainstream and look at the actual credible peer journal articles, you will find the answers, because they're all right there in front of you, so. Thank you, and I hope we will partner to bring further education to the community, because tonight, children could be sleeping better, parents could be sleeping better, headaches, behavior issues could start calming way down with just a little education. So thank you.